All right, you guys ready? I've got six. I've got six o'clock officially. Cell phones is one. We'll have to do that. So just time officially calling our August meeting to order. As we do it, I will now entertain a motion if it moved into closed session after Dr. Henning gives us the reasons. Max have three reasons, I think was John we discussed. If you'd ask, give all three of those, please.
The three reasons are the ones stated in the U.S. 143 dash 1841, the three, to consult with an attorney or attorney retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney's private privilege, meaning attorney of the public Five, to establish and instruct the public body staff while negotiating agents concerning positions undertaken by our behalf of the public body in negotiating the price of other material terms of contract, those contract for acquisition of real property, purchase, option of exchange and lease. And six, to consider the qualifications, confidence, performance, character, fitness, condition of appointment, or condition of admission, one, a nickname to a public officer of forty, or prospective public officer of forty.
We've heard the reasons. We're good to, that we are considering going to close session here. A motion to that effect, please. So move. A motion, do I hear a second? Thank you. Motion second, all in favor, say, if I say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, and you oppose. We will try to be back shortly. Yes, this time I'm going to entertain a motion from the board if we come back to an open session. So move. Here, do I hear a second? Have a motion second, all in favor, say, if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. For those that weren't here, we went into closed session. We appreciate your coming. We are, this is our regular scheduled August meeting. And so at this time, I'd like to welcome everyone. Like we're all very familiar faces. This time I'd ask everyone to stand. And so we can have our moments of solace. We deserve it as since he found his side to return after wanting to run the nation for the last two months, I'll turn to our boss here, Mr. Kate.
Well, I did travel and I did wear my veterans hat and it surprised me. People, you know, being Vietnam veterans, I almost began to believe that nobody understood us or cared for us. But in my travels this summer, there were young people, I mean, twelve, fourteen, sixteen year old kids would walk up to me, shake my hand, and say they appreciated me. That makes a veteran feel real good. So our country is, we think it's going down the tubes kind of maybe, but when it comes to us veterans, this gave me a lot better feeling. So this time if we bow our heads, we'll remember our veterans that are in harm's way at all times.
Thank you. Thank you, Wood. Veteran, would you leave us in our place, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I think all the board have a chance for may included minutes of our regular scheduled meeting. Do you feel there are any changes, corrections, questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve?
Any questions?
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Next is the adoption of our agenda. Being changes, Dr. Baldwin. I know there is some, we heard in our meeting, we had some additions to our personnel which will be disclosed, but that will be by disaffirmations. There will be incorporated changes. Any other changes in the adoption? We, in the agenda before we adopted.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me add one fundraising request.
Make a list of those for the solid ball.
Yes, sir.
Any other changes or additions?
No.
Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adopted? The agenda has proposed, was submitted, so move. Have a motion we adopted, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. It's a lot of people programs. They look like we have any that will change if we get into our school year, which can happen much quicker this year, scratching like summer vacation was almost not exist. Informational items, I think in the packets, there were some different transfers from both Paham and Stiles Manhattan schools. I don't think there are any questions about those. So hearing none, I will entertain a motion that we approve the transfers that have requested.
Are you sure that's separate from discretionary students? Do you have a question?
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
Heard one aye.
Aye.
You got opposed. I don't miss a step up. I was probably there. Over nine, now addition trip requests. Everyone had a chance to look those over. Any questions of any of the board members? Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we approve the trip request as presented?
We accept it.
Have a motion, and second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Fundraising request, Mr. Woody, our FBLA.
Yes, sir. We got about five requests for the FBLA, for Michelle Brooks. As you know, our FBLA is recognized state and nationally now, so they've got a lot of expensive field trips going on. She's got five different field trips and five different fundraisers to support those. It ranges from selling pizza cards to some Tupperware to pecan sales and sponsorships from businesses to go to the nationals later on this year. This will be over from now till probably no way these fundraisers live there.
All of those, I think we had a synopsis of them in our packet. Yes, sir. I'll attach, so we have a chance to look at. Any questions, Mr. Wood?
You're all good with the law. You're good with the law?
Yes, sir.
Any questions to approve the fundraisers as presented?
Have a motion to approve those fundraisers in high school presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Olive varsity volleyball, Mr. Jetter?
They're just selling donuts to, you know, family and friends and taking profits from that, buying, as you can see there, or maybe not, but they're buying pink colored items, socks, knee pads, except it lasts from September 2nd to September 1st.
This is standard, it ends every year?
Yeah.
Any questions to approve as requested?
Have a motion to approve as presented, the request, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. I got through it until that was good. And let's go fundraisers. Mr. Bryan, I think what you have done is you've prepared a list for us for throughout the year, correct?
Yes, because the chairman, we just try to consolidate it, put it all in one list. Doesn't mean we'll do every single one of them, but there are no changes from last year's requests.
I'm sorry, I looked at it, it looked like these are the same ones we've had every last year and years before.
Yes, I'm pretty much prepared, nothing, nothing was added, correct? Correct.
I make a motion to accept fundraisers or approve fundraisers as his request. I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. I went right past public comment, didn't I? Okay. I didn't think of one, but between these ones, you say, does anyone here like to address the board? Sorry, Brittany's sitting there giving the aye, that's why I'm trying to get on through. So anyone here? Hearing none, good. Moving through then, next on our agenda is, thank you. We did have one added, board members have added, we had a request, I think it was in your packets that they gave you, had a request for a fundraiser for the Mayfair Middle School volleyball team. They was a fund house, they'll donate, supply the 20 percent of all sales on a certain date. So I'm looking at a motion to approve.
Make a motion, approve.
A motion approved, the fundraiser request, and a second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Personnel report, that was, that we said, all that test was it over, it's on the air, been given to, I think the meeting tomorrow, her name, correct? Any other questions by any of the board members? Hearing none, I want to entertain a motion that we approve, personnel report as presented. So move. Do I hear a second? Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Very good. Policy, our early college hemp provisions, Mr. Sutton?
Just as you saw in the email there, just changes are highlighted in yellow, just some names, dates. There we go. Some names and dates, and we also changed the mission statement there, something that was developed last year at the end of the year, I believe. And also changed, starting with this freshman class, to do away with the recognition of valid Victorian, salute Victorian, and continue.
Wait a minute, what? What am I about?
So we were going to talk to the staff, and they wanted to, instead of recognizing valid Victorian and salute Victorian, start with this freshman class, when they become seniors graduating, that we would recognize honors and high honors, and that grade point average was listed in there. I believe it's like 3.85 and higher, 3.84 lower.
It's something that we have discussed for a couple of years when I was there, because GPAs are so close, because Pearson and Powers School changed course codes and values often without notification to us. Course codes for college classes changing, going to an A, B, C, D grading, 10-point grading system for, it just was really muddling the waters as to who's going to be where and when.
From what I understand, I still believe that on the, and I think I mentioned it, Mr. Gibbs, today, like on the report card, I guess it still have like their class rank on their, on their transcript, but it wouldn't.
Class ranks for when they're applying, colleges and stuff.
And to grade and classify is typically a principle responsibility of which your current policy says recognition of those honors is sort of a principal discretion, things that each school can kind of do what fits it. And that one especially, like Mr. Gibbs just said, has some real special circumstances that may not apply.
Thank you, guys.
And they, and they all agree to do it this way?
More and more schools are going away, and I think it was stated extensively.
What candidate approved it this week, they're going away with the class of 2019. They're going to the Latin system. Seven systems across the state use the Latin system now, which is the same thing in college you use with Magnusson, Cal Rodeo, and Kinnon Rodeo, and all that. That's what a lot is going to. And we'll do ours, and we did a lot of research on ours.
So we're going to the high school, so focus on this. Any other changes, Mr. Sutton?
Yes, sir.
So this is what your staff would like, so I entertain a motion that we approve the provisions as submitted. So move. Do I hear a second? Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. That means to send Mr. Woody on to Franklin High School.
So we.
Concerning valid Victorian.
We had discussions with Mr. Gibbs and Mr. Sutton, and Franklin High School is leaning going the same way, going away with the aye. I brought a committee together, and they seem to want to keep it. Again, the year 2015, you know, like you said, the state wanted 10-point grading scale. A student makes a 99, a student makes 89.5, they get the same weight, there's no differentiation in it no more. So right now, I have over a dozen kids tied for first place in my sophomore tracks right now. I don't see that going to be changing a whole lot. It will thin down some over the years. So what we're going to, we're going to have a tie, there's no doubt about it, starting with class of 2019 for a first in class. Now, their transcripts will all have the one on, like you actually applied to college, you may have nine kids that got a one on it, but we can't have a true valid sale without points, we have to go away to do the ties. This is what the committee came up with, and we do most of this with the honors and high honors. If we have seven kids tied, all seven of those kids, if they choose to, because some kids don't want to speak at graduation, they'll be able to submit a speech to the committee, the committee will grade it, and they'll tell who's going to do the speech at graduation. Because if you're number one, everybody, all seven kids are not going to get to speak at graduation, we're just way around that. So this is what we came up with, the honors, the high honors, and the student will be. And we're going to look at the end of the third nine weeks, kind of see where their GPA is at, and that may change depending on the class they take. So if a kid's not even in the top, say that eighth tied for one, and this kid's 12, they jump into the tie, then they'll be able to submit their speech as well if they choose to. Some kids want to speak, some don't. So this is something that we know we're going to face. We've talked to everybody, and I've talked to Haywood County, Jackson County, Clay County, Bunkey County, Harrisonville County, Harrison County, nobody does valid sale. They just don't do it. They do variation of things, but a lot of schools went away from it. I was out east and watching news out near Raleigh, actually you can get, and I know the Wake County school system, other ways, little ways to start the class of 2019. And there's seven school systems in the state that use the Latin system, which our college uses. And there's several others, like Jackson County has their own, they use over there. I talked to a Jackson County principal, smoked it on high school. So we looked at what was around us, but I mean, I support what my committee decided, and they wanted to go with this, so this is our proposal, that when we have a tie, the parents will understand what's going to happen in that tie process, because like I said, there's going to be a tie. There's this 10-point grade scale, which hasn't been a bit, because I wish they would have done it like the college, an A, A plus, A, A minus, where the kid gets a 99, they get a few more points than the kid that gets a 90. You know, I wish it was something like that, but we have the, my colleagues at Dallas, and it's just a flat, it's hard to differentiate points now, so this is what we've got, well, it's what we're proposing, Franklin High School, begin our class of 2019. If we do have a tie, I'm pretty sure we'll have a tie in class of 2019.
Unless, unless something changes?
Now, unless something changes, you know, the state may come back and make it A plus, A, A minus, it may change on that. If we don't have a tie, we got to plan a place if we do have a tie, so people can understand that, but you know, they do start calling in the 10th grade, won't know what their kids' rank is in class. Of course, I can say one, but maybe fifteen of the ones in that class, that's all I can say on that. Yes, sir.
Schools that have the Latin system, they still got the same problem, vision to speak then, right?
They use, some of them let the class, anybody that's in the class submit a speech, and they pick from that. Some of them are just nominated speeches, everybody's got a different thing how they do the speeches, but as far as the top, I don't know exactly how they do that. Everybody, that's why Ms. Smith came, she's our chair of our graduation committee, I had her call around, and everybody seems to do it a little bit different, you know.
But are you just going to have a submitted written speech, or will you have?
They'll do a written speech, and they'll narrow it down to a number, then we're going to have them come in and give that speech in front of the committee, go from that. And we'll have, we'll still have two, at least two kids speaking at graduation, but it may not be a salute tour, maybe just the two that we pick out of the seven to tie will be the ones that'll speak at graduation. We'll still recognize all the number ones, but like I said, everybody won't get to speak. Now, a lot of kids don't want to speak at graduation. I've had, you know, the passive, do I have to, yes, indeed, it'll be their choice at that time. If I just want us to have something, if a parent comes and say, why are you going to do the case of the tie, we got a plan in place, case of the tie.
Is anybody in the coaches, your guest, those parents will call you just like they do?
Right. Right.
Mr. Chairman, we have basically four high schools that have different ways of handling this, and I don't see that change, I mean, we have different situations, different communities, and different needs, so I would be, I would recommend that we not have, you know, a policy regarding personal, like, and for that reason.
I agree, personally. I think schools should have the flexibility to do what they want. I will say this, I personally would do away with it, personally, the whole concept of I think problems it creates when you get there, but I do think we need to live to schools, personally, so that's what we have in front of us.
We decided this year by thousands, hundreds of thousands.
They got hundreds of thousands. We started a real strong class this year until, you can't really figure till the sober at the end, and it was, I mean, our top five was within hundreds of thousands.
Incredible, that changed, we may know that changed within like two or three days of our graduation.
Right, it did.
Look at how the system was set up and the waiting and all that stuff.
When the AP classes came in, and the weights came in, and they changed in the last, I mean, you really can't really project one until the, by the last day of school. One thing I do like about this, you're asking a student, parent's speech in two days, you know, third in that path, and that should say, they've got some time to develop a good speech to present to that community. The speeches will be a long, because they'll be A, B, C, or D on, and that way, I don't know who wants to do the speech, anything like that.
Any questions of Mr. Woody or employee? No, I'll entertain a motion.
Do we accept, do we just?
Amendment is presented, do I hear, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Very good. Thank you for your work on that. I think that's a better, it's a better one we've had. Revenant drug testing contract, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, sir. It's the exact same contract that Mr. Bruce McCauley submitted last year and was approved. The prices have not changed, the procedures have not changed. He's worked, lives in Franklin, so I think he works very hard to make the program as easy as possible for us to maintain and work.
Mr. Gibbs, is this as marked as dividend A? Is there, and I think that's because I had drafted some additional provisions that we just made, this had been his contract, and we added some provision and things. Do you have that still?
That's what he, it's, I think the reason that's marked as dividend A, because there are a few things that are not in that that need to be in there, and if you don't have them, I'll, I'll get with you.
Okay.
So it would just, the board, this is all fine, just there are some additional required legal provisions that need to get added to it, that if you approve it's subject to that.
Just because I want to say since I'm not sure how this will go over, but I do want to say it. In our contract, is there a way, we basically, we go through that, where we test everybody's on every team, correct?
During the season, yes.
But are we doing that in mass pretty much, before the start, or basically every team, they're pretty much, all of the athletes on that team are tested at the same?
All the athletes on that team are tested at the start of the season, or real close at the start of the season.
But then you random with them out.
That's right.
Just to give you an example, my daughter has been, she'll have that test, and then all of a sudden, a few weeks later, they'll be saying, you have to be drug tested again, and they'll call her in, and she's actually done that twice, and she's just.
Do 10 percent is, is a random?
So if there are multiple sport athletes, are they retested again?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, my son last year was tested once in football, once in basketball, I don't know if he was on the random list, but that was twice in one year. Is that okay with that testing?
Yes, one thing I would say is, well, I think we're doing that, that the mass, I will put this, I still here, I wonder sometimes when we have them all at the same time, is that really accomplishing what we need, is there a way to actually stagger that at the beginning? Would that help in any way?
Oh, no, I can inquire of Mr. McCauley, I don't.
It's not announced.
Yeah, they don't know when it's coming.
It's staggered in, by, you know, you're going to get maybe all the football at one time.
Staggered by teams.
By teams, teams, where you get the girls, volleyball in another group.
But not, it's not staggered within the team.
It's not announced either, that reason, they don't know when it's coming. And for that reason, you know, they may be tested two weeks into the season.
I guess the reason I'm saying, I'm interrupting our call, I keep hearing the rumors that the kids, as their great line, know when it's coming. I don't know if there's any truth to that, I hope that's not, but.
I don't know what's coming.
Yeah, that rumor continues to persist, so if we could, let's just try to make absolutely sure, we do, we do everything we can to avoid that being out there.
Not sure we can say random, no one knows.
Oh, yeah.
Bruce does that, or he don't.
Anyway, this is, this is a contract, anyone have any questions, things to stand on what we did during the morning, price increases, and that should be a drive, same we had. Any other questions? No, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to accept it with the distance of eighty.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Have a motion, this is second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Essential children's contract for Mr. Rush, Nancy.
This is a contract to take the place of a future that is out on the periphery with Mr. Rush taking her place until November 1st, and the funds will be paid out of EC funds.
Mr. Rush has been a member of our child, and what our promote, I'm very confident to do so.
He keeps trying to retire, but.
He thinks he's out.
Yeah.
He's a known quality, I guess what I'm trying to say. Any questions? No, here you have a motion to approve.
So move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Just for kids, physical therapy contract, all in this, repeat of what we've taken.
Yeah, this is a repeat of something that we've done every year. It's to provide physical therapy to students that need that, and the funds are paid out of EC funds.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
A motion to approve and accept, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Same thing, speech and language pathology, pathologist contract.
Again, this is a, yeah, this is something that.
This is for user before, standard one.
Yes, just to pick up some of those extra preschool speech services that we have, and the money will come out of EC funds.
Mrs., she's worked for, she's done this in the past.
Make a motion to accept contract as presented by Mrs. Trump.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Have two seconds, so I mean, all in favor, obviously we have the majority, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. Gary Brown, Mr. Bell?
This is a contract that we entered into last year with Mr. Brown, and services will be provided through, where our funds are available, local funds.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the contract with Mr. Brown, do I hear a second?
Sorry.
Motion second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move. Dr. Henning, policy updates and amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start with the first group of policies that are not for approval tonight. They either require some other step or, or just here for a first reading. The first one is 3226 slash 4205 internet safety. You are required to have that as a condition of debrave funding. Before you can adopt it, you already have a first reading of this actually, but before you can formally adopt it, you have to have an, announce a public hearing, I don't think anybody should often talk about it, but you have to announce a public hearing for your September meeting. So with approval for that one, I'm going to ask you to make as part of your motion that authorize the superintendent to publicize notes for hearing at your September meeting. And I don't know, since I just said all that, it might be easier to take a motion on that now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Permissive, so we're based on a tentative motion that we authorize our posting, they will also have a public hearing concerning policy number 3226 at our September meeting. Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Have a motion, this is second, all in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
And you oppose. So move.
Thank you. The next is 6140, student wellness, that as a condition of adoption is supposed to be developed in conjunction with the school wellness committee for the, I don't even, I meant to review this with you when we were looking at all of these policies. Do we have a dozen of school wellness committees? What happened to that? This one is required because it's, it's shared with EPI.
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, Carol nodded her head. Do we have that, Carol?
Through the SHAC committee, you should get our social wellness committee.
Okay. We have this place.
Yes.
Okay.
Same time will it meet between now and the September meeting, kid? So that policy.
I'm sure that can be arranged.
There are places in that policy for them to, to put in some input, I don't know what that input looks like, but I'm helping, to help out if, if you'd like. The board actually does not need to take any action on that one at all, because you've had a first reading, we just need to have input from the committee before we, after adopted.
And we adopted as of September, that's the meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, policy seventy-six fifty, I want to pull that one, Dr. Baldwin and I discussed the fact that this is a really overly worded policy, again, this is based on some misconduct in other districts, and is far more extensive than I think we need here. Um, we're gonna, I'll bring you the new policy next month of consideration. Policy A three oh five is another new one that's just here for first reading, federal grant administration, most of this is already just, sort of spells out what's already the law, but I think that it's strongly encouraged by Department of Education guidance, and may be helpful when you apply for federal grants or receive them, to be able to show, yes, we have this policy in place, so that one I would ask you to approve as a first reading, it'll be approved in September.
Or we could go ahead and do it, Dr. Baldwin, have you looked at this? Have our other directors looked at making three oh five as a reason to delay?
I wouldn't think so, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's basically the things that we have to do to file these federal grants and, and to receive them.
We've looked at it, there's nothing else, so I would, I'm not long to put you in motion, I would propose, so just go ahead, accept this as a second reading, approve it in mass with the others, we're gonna be moved.
That'd be fine too, Mr. Chairman, the others are all fairly small modifications of existing policies that don't require a second reading. The only one I would bring to your attention is in policy forty fifty, children of military families, there is a requirement to, that each principal identify children that are connected to military families in some way by a certain point each year, my suggestion, and if there's no objection from the board, I will assert this language, is to have it say by January thirty-first, I believe that's the deadline that's set in federal law anyway, so with that, I'm happy to answer your question.
What is the policy worth, John?
It's forty fifty, children of military families.
Yeah, but not the less of it, thank you.
Not? It's down below, if you keep, I don't know, there's a decision in this between the ones that are new or need more action versus small changes.
Okay. Let me summarize, so we're pulling seventy-six fifty, that would not be part of the motion to accept the policy, that would be, that will be revisited in September. Three two two six, we can approve that with the amendments as a second reading with, the rest of my members, you said that.
That one has to happen in September.
September, regardless, so we can entertain a motion to, let's see if we make a motion to approve, thirty-six twenty, four three, four three, four one three five, five oh two eight, six one four oh, six two two oh, seven six five oh, and we're also going to accept the motion, eight three oh five, move will five, do we accept this as our second reading, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions? Go here, a motion. So moved. And do I hear a second? And motion's second, all in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose, so move, thank you, John, as always, we've worked on that. Island roof bid acceptance, Dr. Baldwin and Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir. Um, the, the bid by K L Metals was the lowest bid that we received.
And so we had three bids total, correct?
Correct, there were three, um, Bonnet's, and what was the third one, Vince?
Vincent.
Vincent. Um, and K L Metals here in town, locally run business was the lowest bid, meets the specifications that we required for the roof.
Bid's two seventeen.
Two seventeen, correct, two seventeen. Two-year warranty, forty-year, two-year warranty on workmanship, forty-year warranty on materials.
As we said, this will be coming out of capital outlay, correct? As we said, this is something to be done, so I would entertain a motion that we accept the contract as recommended by, by Mr. Gibbs, that would, will be with K L Metals. It's so moved. Have a motion that we accept, close, close to me, go here, second. Have a motion, second, all in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose, so moved.
It starts.
Sorry?
We want it start.
Boy, you've just beaten it much, and, and, I understand our urgency in terms of getting this started. You don't have any idea of why this is starting to be?
Um, I think it's a little bit at the mercy of the supplier also.
Metal supplier.
Uh, to have the, the roll of our product on site.
You'll be able to order it soon, it's passed up tomorrow, hopefully.
Hopefully, yes.
That'd be exciting.
I will talk to him tomorrow.
Great. Yeah, please stress to him, we'd like to have that done as quickly as possible. I think you will. Business finance, cybersecurity insurance, who is going to speak to that, Angie, Tim, and then it's supposed to be.
I'll start. This is an additional policy for our liability, we're not currently covered under liability for any kind of cyber security breach, so if, for example, and it, it came up because of our nurses and our schools are not covered under the county's policy, if some of our student information was to be breached, because they are county employees, so we started looking into it, and I talked to, I've got a quote, it's five, it's about fifty-nine hundred dollars a year, and I talked to Tim and Dr. Baldwin, and I've had a conversation about it, and we feel that's something we definitely need, because nothing is covered, and it also would cover information about our employees, social security numbers and things if they are breached.
So if, if something were to happen, someone were to break in our system, steal social security members or student IDs, I think, John, are we required to send out notices and, and press release, all this other stuff that we have to do, this insurance policy, that would have, it could probably be in tens of thousands of dollars if that were to happen.
As far as the cost, that would make them necessary.
Right, the necessary public. And for some of the things, that HIPAA's not one of them, so like the student medical information that started this all out, doesn't have a private, private action, and I don't believe, but, but there could be for lots of other, you could have a negligence claim for not having had enough security up, wind up being sued over, this policy would kick in then. I do, I think increasingly, there's so much information that is all vulnerable, and people know it, and so there's, you know, lots of different potential hazards there, and I do think the pol, this policy is, is a good idea.
What's it cost on?
Fifty-nine hundred dollars.
I'd say I'd be able to spend money like that, it is what it is.
Let me make sure I understand, so any teacher, his social security numbers in that, if that's breached, and any losses a teacher may incur because their social security number was hacked out, this would be, their losses would be covered.
It would at least defend a claim against this district or roof that hadn't happened. I don't know whether it has anything to do with this. It probably wouldn't.
So it's just liability then, that, that, that we course against the school district, we just protect the school district or?
Hey, let me, let me check. I, yes, I'd be love to tell you how much, but there is at least some coverage for somebody, an individual has a loss because of information that was stolen from us.
Necessary evil. Any other questions? I would, I would entertain a motion. So moved. Motion to be approved, purchase of the cybersecurity insurance, that costs fifty-nine hundred dollars, go here, second. Sorry. Have a motion, second, all in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose? So moved. Student code conduct, Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the board, the main case legal policy that was approved August the first, but August the first does not include a student code conduct. Our formal policy did include student code conduct, most of our school handbooks, student handbooks refer to the main case, uh, student code conduct, so what vast ten to do is take the student code conduct that was approved in the last policy manual, and place it on our website, so that it can still be accessed by parents, teachers, and administration. It does have some minor revisions that refer, that have come about because of the policy, but it's basically all student code conduct.
So we can go out to take any action on this, this is just information purposes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you would, please, I think just for clarity's sake, as Dr. Baldwin said, most, most districts don't have the, their code suit come up as a policy, we did, we repealed the entire policy manual, we voted the new one in, so this would just give clarity that, that this is the, the code of student conduct for the district, if the board would have brought it in place.
Any other questions? No, then the place of motion would be that we accept the reading, reinstate our, it's accepted.
Yes.
Have a motion, go here, second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose, so moved. Monthly work sessions, Dr. Baldwin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a reference to, to work sessions, as we approved earlier in this meeting, the island roof bid, we now have a remainder of the five hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay allocation mechanic to appropriate at our time, so we need to meet as soon as possible to discuss that, and then the other work session would be the possibility of having a work session on, on or around September the nineteenth, to provide the board with information that they can use to then vote on on the regularly scheduled coordinate September meeting. I think this, everyone's gonna be out of town by that, so.
May one, we'll be bringing our two, our two, and then we're hit by.
FaceTime.
FaceTime, so.
Yeah.
What's that?
So we got your idea.
Come on, Tim, I'll just do.
No, if it doesn't work, you can't say, okay, run on over here.
You don't have your helicopter about yet.
We'll, we'll have a backup.
Okay.
Uh, and so we're, at this point, we need to set, we're looking at part of work session, part of work being on the fifteenth.
May it.
Thursday, Thursday, I think I have it.
I know it's being made pretty with the actual word. So what about the fourteenth? So, we're back to, so we stay with time.
So how long on Thursday?
It'd be fifteen, right?
Just long enough to present information, though, it would be about, every day, just all the information I presented to you.
Give it time to have it, do you think about part of?
Should it start at five o'clock or three?
About five thirty, yes, we can.
About five thirty?
We'll get there from. Yeah, we're gonna have a budget work session.
I don't think five thirty, we wish that it was, it's almost five o'clock.
Yeah, we don't have Wi-Fi over here. It's coming, it hasn't shown up yet.
I'm, I'm around Wednesday, I won't, I don't, not being there.
They didn't figure, turn it on.
I think we'll be there.
Okay, so we can do this, start at five thirty, if you can. It shouldn't take that long, this, this place will be to give us information like that, and we can, questions, that way we go ahead of time.
I gave you the waiting, uh.
Think about it.
Everybody have a, maybe that access where we're gonna be.
I'll have you know this.
I'll be here, I think, we'll be coming here, spread what we mean.
We're, we're.
And just definitely can be, yes.
Well, I, I, I mean, I have it even on my phone, I can, I can log in, so I'm, so flexible.
So we'll go ahead and formally, after your motion, we adopt the fourteenth of September then as our work session, planned around for our regular scheduled meeting, what day is that? Now, the rhythm's scheduled. So we have a special work session on the fourteenth, do I hear a motion to approve that, excepted? So moved. And a second. All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose?
That'll be at five thirty.
That'll be at five thirty, we'll get the time to get to that word. We also need to set another one, I think, as Chris said, quick as possible, need to prioritize our capital outlay for the rest of it, so we need to probably have that as soon as we possibly can. Did you have a date in mind, Dr. Baldwin, you suggesting anything? Yeah, that would be a little bit, it would take a little while. So we got August twenty-fifth, three o'clock, or later.
This thirty, I might just.
That's out for me.
That's out. August thirtieth, Tuesday.
On the thirtieth, Tuesday, what time?
Two or later.
I can't do anything before.
Okay. Wednesday, anytime, and Thursday, September first, anytime. Be the thirty-first or the first.
Yes, Bob, I'll be the thirty-first.
Is it Thursday?
That's the first. And we're gonna try to do this one here, if I can, we're gonna try to do that one, that we're talking about.
You're free Thursday.
First.
For volleyball.
Based on, based on athletic events, you'll be free.
Okay.
Okay. Or would a morning on the Wednesday do it AM, how would that be, intend to be that one made? Uh-oh.
That I can do it.
What like?
Brand new business, go.
Thank you.
I could do that.
And we did it on Wednesday, the thirty-first, nine o'clock.
I had to check to make sure I had my time in store, because, I have a big time before you.
Of course, we could say time.
Yeah, I can certainly do that.
Okay, this is done, and so we're planning on August thirty-first at nine o'clock, we have our budget work session in terms of capital outlay. Okay. There are motions that affect that, we will be, we'll have our work session in on thirty-first at nine o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have all the after.
All in favor, someone's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you oppose? So moved, very good, thank you all. Anything else? Dr. Baldwin. How many bits?
Tomorrow, we'll have Safer Schools Active Shooter Training for all the employees, this is a makeup date, we held at Franklin High School Pilates Center, nine AM, from nine AM to noon, Amber Wright, SRO with East Franklin School, will be presenting this. There's an attachment on the next sheet that, that outlines all the open houses on the district, as you refer to that in your package, I'll read through all those dates, as you just, that's what we wanted to do. On the Wednesday, we'll begin tissue interview interviews, we'll interview from nine AM to noon, and we'll finish up on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, from nine AM to noon. Obviously, August the twenty-ninth is a big day for us, that's when students return. Monday, September the fifth is Labor Day holiday, school will not be in session. On Monday, the twenty-sixth of September, we'll have our regularly scheduled work meeting, and we'll have a work session on September the fifteenth.
Very good.
And September four, we'll meet in Maria Collins.
Hello. Anything else you need the board members to break up? Got some questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Page. So moved. Go here, second. All in favor, someone saying aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you for your work on that night, and, and everybody being here. I'll get it, watch.